Good afternoon, I'd like to call the Johnson County Board of Education meeting to order for May 23rd, 2016. And before we get started into our regular business, there's our turnover to Mr. Sayer.
Yeah, we thank everyone coming out tonight. As always, we like to start our board meeting now with recognizing the great kids and parents and students we have here in Johnson County Schools. And once again, we want to do that tonight. We've got several to recognize. I want to turn it over first of all to Mr. Eastep at the middle school. I think he's done soccer and speech and drama and Rogers Explorers and I don't know what else, Joe.
I think that's three we have. Appreciate the board inviting us, letting us come out and recognize some of our kids. So we're going to start off with the girls soccer. They had just an outstanding season. And I'm going to let Mr. Brian Johnson and Paige Cottle, is she here? Brian is our head coach and Ms. Cottle is our assistant coach, talk a little bit about what they achieved this year.
First of all, we appreciate you all inviting us here today. This, as some of y'all have read, some of you heard, this is the first time ever that girls soccer, or actually any of the middle school soccer teams have won the EKC Conference Tournament. And not only did it, the first time we win it, that's the first time we've ever been in the finals. So a big accomplishment by these girls this year. Really good group of girls. They really worked hard all year, great group. A lot of experienced players, a lot of inexperienced players, all mixed together. By the end of the year, they fought through several injuries, got to the finals of the tournament, and done really well. They did a great job. Not only did they grow up soccer players, they grew up as young ladies too. As our eighth graders, unfortunately had to make big decisions this year because championship conference game was on same day as their eighth grade trip was scheduled. So they had to make decisions on what they wanted to do. We didn't. We told them whatever they wanted to do was fine with us because they'd earned both of them. And some of them stayed and played soccer, some of them went on to their eighth grade trip. And we're trying to schedule them a little something so that everybody can go to Kings Island there, so the ones that did miss it will get a chance to do that anyway. But a great group of girls, worked hard. And going forward, they'd love having their own soccer field.
Introduce some of the girls then.
Stand up girls. You've got Kelsey Blair, Constance McCarty, Lauren Johnson, Rhanna Blair, Lana Lyons, Gigi Ferguson, Lauren Harden, LaShay Sayers, Alyssa Willis, Abigail Daniel, and Raven McKenzie. Is that all of you? Everybody there? Overall, we have 24 players called to the team this year.
Just a little side note, we tried to reschedule the championship game there, it was scheduled on that Saturday, and opposing team wasn't willing to cooperate.
Which was excellent.
And we'd be there, we'd be nothing so. Okay, our next group, I'm going to go back a little bit to the end of last school year. A gentleman called and just kind of inquiring to see if I'd be interested in allowing us to have a speech and drama team. And it's something that, you know, we had it on our salary schedule, you know, at a point in time, but it's just something that's never, they've never really competed in, in the school's history, really. I think back from Central Elementary Street, there were, there was a teacher that took a few kids toward the end of that run, before it became Johnson County Middle School, that competed with some speech and drama. But I talked to Mr. Stamper there and talked to Mr. Cochran, about the work with some of their kids last year at Highland Elementary. And we decided to start again, bring up their speech and drama team. And I was so impressed with what they did and the work that they put in, thanks to Mr. Stamper and his wife and Mr. Horn. And it took a whole group of parents too to volunteer some time to help them throughout the whole process. But I'll turn it over to those guys and let them talk a little bit about their year.
Girls. This was the first year that we had a...
They're welcome to walk up front if you want to.
Girls, come up front. I'm not being chauvinistic, we only had girls this year. So come on up, ladies. And these 10 beautiful, talented young ladies have received more awards in one year than was ever expected of them. They were the second place regional champions with only 10 people when the champion team for the region had 30. And so our girls, our team was the only one that I have known in the past to have such a small team by number, but also qualify for state competition. And every child qualified for state in every category that they competed in. And so that's almost unheard of. And they went to the University of Kentucky and represented our county and our school very well. And we actually had a semifinalist in two categories. Amelia Crezer in solo acting and storytelling at state competition, which is the first time that we have had that at the school ever. And so I'm going to allow them to introduce themselves and tell what categories that they represented us at the state event.
Alyssa Random, poetry and improv duo.
Abigail Lilly, storytelling and improv duo.
Savannah Ratliff, radio broadcasting and declamation.
Taylor Adams, pros.
Kaylee Patrick, pros.
Centara Fudge, in duo acting.
Emma Stamper, pros, poetry and improv duo.
Abigail Daniel, pros, or poetry and improv duo.
Amelia Crezer, storytelling and solo acting.
All right. And so they, hopefully our goal is to have more feeder schools in the future, and also to carry this on up into the high school for our eighth graders who are going on up there. I would like to recognize really quick, I know our time is limited, our parents who all have those cameras pointed in the back, but our parents and other volunteer coaches and judges, please raise your hand and be recognized because we couldn't have done it without that. As well as our teacher, we could not have had this team and be as successful without Mr. Jeff Horn, who is an inspiration to us all. So we are hoping to continue with a summer camp this summer to get them ready for competition next year. So thank you all very much.
These are our next two students that the middle school like to recognize for the board here. These two exceptional students, of course, they both are 4.0 students, straight A's, have sat straight A's both years that they've been in the middle school. But most recently, I guess, they have been awarded as Rogers Explorers Award winners for this year. And what that is, Center for Rural Development, kind of sponsored by Hal Rogers, started by Hal Rogers, I guess, in the rural counties, Southern Kentucky, Southeastern Kentucky, Eastern Kentucky, they set down an application process, starting with eighth graders going up to, I believe sophomores maybe, but eighth graders can begin to apply. And of all the thousands that had applied, they selected about 100, a little over 100 students to award them with this Rogers Explorers Award. And what that means for these two students is they get, I don't think you know the college yet, do you?
Yeah.
They're at Asbury.
Yeah.
Both of you went to Asbury? Okay, they get, in the summer, they get to spend, is it three days and two nights, I believe, at Asbury, and they get to explore all kinds of different, it's just a wonderful learning experience, but they get to explore all kinds of career paths for, in the fields of math, science, technology, just an outstanding, outstanding opportunity for them, a great learning experience. And probably even more importantly, something they might not necessarily have to think about yet, but down the road, it's going to be something great that they're going to be able to put on scholarship applications to try to earn some scholarships when it's a little bit later on down the road. But those are the last two students, that's our middle school, Rogers Explorer recipients.
Jackson Ratliff and Abby Easted. Thanks again.
Appreciate it, Mr. Easted. Mr. McKenzie, let you do the sporting sports member from high school.
On behalf of Johnson Central, we'd like to thank the board also for giving us the opportunity to recognize some of our student athletes here. We have three groups here in the spring who have excelled either as regional champions or individual state qualifiers on their different teams and different avenues. One group that I don't think is here is our girls tennis duo who qualified for the state competition. I think there was some scheduling conflict with both of those two students. And Coach Wolfter from the middle school, I don't think is able to be here, but Savannah Spurlock and Ally Wells won the region again this year in tennis and was able to qualify for the state competition. The other two groups are here to be recognized. First, I'd like to introduce our bass fishing team and Coach Jimmy Van Hooz, and I'll let him talk a little bit about our bass fishing team here in the spring.
This is Blake Morton and Kenneth Powers, and they qualified for the state fishing tournament. And we finished 10th overall, which, you know, it makes our fourth in four years, our fourth top 10 finish at the state, which we've had fifth, seventh, and two 10s, which I'd like to do better. And I certainly want to thank the board for starting this four years ago, because it's still not caught on in our area, you know, so we're up to 57 boats in the region, but it's caught on everywhere else in the state, and I thank you for allowing that to happen.
Correct me if I'm wrong, our region did win the state, too, it was Lawrence County.
Yes, Lawrence County, yeah. So they invited me down there to their board meeting, and I went just to show a support for that coach, and it was a nice gesture, I think. And we really appreciate it because we've had them all, you know, and appreciate all the people that sponsored us over the years. And I'm looking forward to trying to do better. You know, I'd like a fifth and a seventh and two 10s, but appreciate you all and thank you.
And our track team competed in the 2A Region 7 competition here at Harlot County here last week, and I'm going to turn that over to Coach Randy Ward, let him talk a little bit about his team.
I'd start with, thank the board for allowing us to come over here and stuff there. We had four kids that qualified. David Gale, Marcus Wells, Katie Wells, and then Sean Curtis, which he could be making it tonight if he had prior engagement to do. They go, it's pretty good, the track, it's a hard event to go to anyway. There are 1,086 kids going to compete up there, and we've got two kids in the top six, and one in the top 10, and those a little further down, I think he's 12. That's pretty good, out of 1,086 kids even competing up there and all region-wise and all for us to make it. Last year, we had to track person, got a medal state, it's real tough to actually get it because some of the Lexington Louisville schools just like basketball, something else, and all for what's going on there, so many other people. But I'm proud of these kids, they do a great job, stuff I expect. And also, and stuff there, in two events, these kids, they're in the top 10, Marcus is only a sophomore, now he's the only kid in the top 10, it's other than the junior, senior, and Katie is a ninth grader, and there are nobody in her category that's above a junior, senior. So it's a great accomplishment for those kids and stuff for what's going on. So then Sean, he set a new school record. He ran the mile, and if you don't think it's bad, just go out tonight and time yourself and start running. And then see, he's set a school record of four minutes and 58 seconds in the mile. So I said, imagine, just go try and time yourself a little bit, just 100, and then see, you know what I'm saying, how tough it is for what's going on up there. You know, and Sean's only 11th grader, so also, so I expect good things. And all I want to go with, I got for these kids and all myself, as I try to do as a coach, is get them all, last year we had two kids get full ride track scholarships because of them and their mom and dad, and brother, sister, nothing, go to school. And I told these kids, you work hard and stuff, and I'll try to get you money. I think as a coach, that's what you should try to do for the kids. And all I said, had two kids get a full ride, you just don't see that very often, and I told these kids they could too. So, you know, I think they're accomplished, and the track program in general and stuff there for is coming up and stuff there. You know, I think board too, last year we had a little inconvenience because of football stadium, we had to cut out because of grainy, you know, but this year we got it all fixed and nicely striped and everything, and all good. So anyway, I think board and the district Johnson Central stuff, they're helping us and guiding us along up there.
Also, you probably missed, you did not go up to Aladdin, up to Set Theater this last week, our drama club. They did two normal performances this year, Alpha Christmas and Aladdin, Miss Pat and Sean Curtis was in it as one of the lead, as Aladdin did. And that's one thing I want to say about all these kids, I know in the middle school to high school, they're involved in multiple activities, for its academics, for its sports, for its clubs, organizations in the high school, they're just involved a lot of time, a lot of extracurricular things, and appreciate them doing that, appreciate the parents giving back and forth to all these activities and things they participate in. So got some more to recognize at this time, if you want to kind of come up front and call your names, these are all students from academics, first of all, their governor's scholarship program, our GSPs, and the first one we have, our W4 this year, and they are Olivia Burchett. And Trump. So it's quite an accomplishment to be chosen as governor's scholars, and there, you might know 10, whatever, Noel, how many are there across the state? Do you all remember any of that?
Remember, doesn't it vary? I don't think, is there a set?
It's got a set number, Kelly here, there was 290.
Yeah, I'm going to say approximately 100 each year that are chosen, and it's quite a...
It's, I'd say Johnson County probably, over the past decade, has probably had a higher ratio of any school at the state.
Especially in Eastern Kentucky here, so. We appreciate these gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. We also have two students who chose for the governor's scholar school, the arts program. They are Dylan Conley from local music. And Andrew Chapman from musical theater. We also have two that have been chosen, the governor's school internship program, and that is Keitha Roberts. And the high school also has two Rogers Scholars participants. Again, one of them already stood up here with us, the past school year it was Olivia Burchett. This year, precipitating is Daniel Short. Daniel's here, didn't see him. We also have two kids who've been, two students who've been chosen to go to Craft Academy. If you remember, that's kind of like the Gattin Academy, started last year at Morehead State University. We had four of them chosen last year, and we've had two chosen this year, Sarissa Hale and Mariah Brooke Hall. And we also have a young lady chosen, that is UK Rising Scholar, and she's also, and you can correct me on this, Leah, as I say it here, it's H O B Y, it's Hugh O'Brien Scholarship, is that correct?
Yeah.
So Leah Blair. So just congratulations to all these fine young ladies and gentlemen here, that won these various awards here at Johnson Central High School. And I know they'll go out and represent us well, probably on these endeavors. Thank you all. And that's Friday, we had our senior awards at Johnson High School, which we had 23 honor students, we had 4.0, we gave way over $2.7 million in scholarships. 144 students passed through. A lot of things across the district. And I guess we'll start our regular board meeting, feel free to stay, but feel free to leave all the school stuff here. You've got places. No, people see the things do. Well, it's pretty awesome. Also starts the district baseball tonight, Craft Academy first game. District softball starts tomorrow night, second game, is that right?
Okay, first item is to approve the amended agenda, as our motion to do so. Second, motion made in second meeting discussion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item 3, approve the minutes from April 25th, recommend meeting bills from April from May 19th. Second? Motion made in second, any discussion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item 4A, renovation report.
I said, I said. You got a little paper stand on the side. Sorry.
That's silly. A was approve normal payments for Murphy Graves Trimble, invoice for the roofing part of the project. The basic part, and then, yeah, that was it right there. The $700 was for the facility plan. We checked all that in our community pay dollars.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
No need.
Second?
No need.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Now we'll call for a vote, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 4B, Scott.
The second one is a payment to Brian Corporation, they're probably 95 to 98% done at both places right now. I know they've got a one downspout and a piece of trim, flat gap, and maybe a couple things here, it's a bit waiting for the kids to get out of the way where they're worried about hurt. They're right at the architects' look to these, and I recommend you pay that.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
No need.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item 4C, Mr. Rowland.
4C is Frederick and May. They're moving along real well, the flat gap, they've been held up a little bit because of the rain, especially working on the parking lot out there. But they've got quite a bit of work done, and they coordinate everything with the roof and everything's going to be there. It's just normal payment, architects approved it, and I recommend you pay that.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
No need.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item 4D, Mr. Rowland.
We do have some things that we've kind of held our contractors off on some change orders, but we've got our architect here to explain those a little bit. There's some things that we have discovered in our project and things that couldn't be helped, but he can explain further what those are.
There are three items that come before the awards, and I just proposed change orders. Scott said, in this renovation project, you always uncover something that you don't expect. I mean, if you remember at the high school, we found a lot of things that we had not expected. But one of the things that we were able to do early in the designs, that Scott and his crew removed a lot of things that we could remove at that time to uncover and discover everything that fits. So we were able to do that, so we kind of narrowed it down to a few things here. One of the things is regarding the roofing. On the roof of Flat Gap, the existing structure sloped from the corridor walls to the outside walls on both the camps. But when the joists, once we removed that roof, the joists sitting over the corridor were set level. You would not have known that unless you had removed the roof. So we had to use tapered insulation on that corridor in order to continue to slope out. And the proposed price on that is $16,904, and that's for tapered insulation on all the corridors there. When we reviewed that price, actually that price has come down from what we started with right around, it's come off about 15%. So we feel that's a good number there. The other two items deals with Frederick and May construction. One of them is for the drain line and sewage line over to the treatment plant. Once we started removing dirt and could actually tell where those lines are, they cross, so we had to reroute some in order for that sewage line to properly drain where it was from the treatment plant over to treatment plant. That price is $4,761. The last item deals with, coupled with two sets of doors, they enter into the gym, you know, in the older part of Flat Gap. The billing officials come back and said, we would like those replaced. We've looked at removing the frames that are there, the doors that are there, replacing those, and as a total of $7,500. We started the project with about $129,000 to $130,000 in contingencies. We haven't touched any of that since today's date. Once you do this, you'll have about $100,000 worth of activity contingencies. And as of tonight, we're not expecting anything else to come about, so we've pretty much opened up and closed up everything we need. We would recommend approval of those three change orders tonight, based on conditions that we've discovered after opening up more areas.
What are we at on budget?
This is the, like I said, the only thing that we would, I don't foresee any more change orders, and you have approximately $100,000 left in that contingency amount.
Is there a motion to approve? Second? Motion's made in second, any discussion? There'll be no discussion, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item, thank you. Item 5A, Mr. Sayer.
This is our standard agreement with the KDC membership for the 16, 17 school year. I recommend we pay that. You get a variety of services from them that has been efficient in this group.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
No need.
Second?
No need.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item 5B, Mr. Sayer.
Sometimes we have students that come from Midway and do student teaching here at Johnson Central High School, Johnson County Schools, and we ask if you approve or are in the way with them to let agree with.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
No need.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 5C, Mr. Sayer.
This is something we've also done in the past, we've had everyone pick Sandy Detention Center out here in case of emergency. We would use our buses to transport the population to a particular place, and just declare the emergency, it's something we have to do anyway, so we recommend that you do that. Let them go find Ronnie at that time, and we provide a driver in a bus.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
No need.
Second?
No need.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 5D, Mr. Sayer.
This is something our auditor's given us, that he doesn't want to operate under two sets of rules, or be one set of rules between July and December, and another set of rules between January and the following July. And he thinks it's to our benefit to operate under the second set of rules and be consistent throughout the school year in doing that. It's to want better of our district in the audit process.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
No need.
Second?
No need.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 5E, Ms. Coleman.
She is currently not here, she's at, I think, a dance recital, or a talker, if I'm not mistaken. And again, we ask you to approve our community eligibility program again, which we provide free lunches and breakfast to all our students here at Johnson County Schools.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
No need.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 5F, Ms. Goble.
The first draft budget was presented to the board in January, and the next step in the budget development process is the tentative working budget. The tentative budget provides the board more the fine picture of estimated revenues and expenditures than the January draft budget that you guys saw and approved. Some facts and... Some facts about this budget, the SEAC base, they gave us the estimate, May 13th they posted it, and they kept the SEAC base at $3,981, same as it was last year. And as you know, SEAC funding is our largest revenue resource. But some things we do know at the stage of the planning process, we know what our current board approved staffing and allocated funding effect is, the actual estimated contractual cost for services, policies and fees that we normally have throughout the year, estimates of our plant operations and maintenance based on our history and trends, our site-based allocations, and actual funding awards and estimated receipts based on historical collections. The SEAC amount that I budgeted is $17,550,000, sorry, $17,550,842. All of our other general fund rate, we kept it as the same because we really don't know any specific changes. The salaries of all positions remain the same, there's no rises budgeted, only the right changes and state increases that we have every year, salary increases. And we just asked the board to approve the tentative working budget, and the final working budget will be approved in September.
Thank you.
That's right, thanks.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye, any opposed, motion carries. 5G, Mr. Burchett.
Well, as Ms. Goble just said, the salary schedules are largely remaining the same, the few changes in your packet are marked in red, includes a COLA adjustment for the Head Start program money, and then there was an additional position, I believe, for academic team coaches at Middle and High School, and middle school also requests of a speech and drama assistant, which you saw that presentation presented tonight, they've been very successful and largely operated at little to no cost to the district.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
To approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye, any opposed, motion carries. 5H, Ms. Goble.
Since the last meeting, we had bid openings for concessions, soft drinks, best repair parts, fuel and tires, and we'd just like the board to take the recommendation of the BE committee, which was one of the [inaudible].
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye, any opposed, motion carries. 5I, student trips, policy fair child and youth debt.
Middle school requests permission to attend academic camp at St. Catherine's, same camp they do each year, and then also girls' basketball, that one was in June, then girls' basketball, July 21st through 23rd, and Trendy for basketball camp over the summer.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
All, second, high schools here, so to speak, currently out of town with his son, registered to college today, I ask you to approve, as generated here on your affidavit there, and also ask you to add to the middle, the high school academic team going to St. Catherine for campus summer also.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye, any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
5J, Ms. Goble.
Joe Nance talked to us back in the fall, or maybe even earlier than that, when we were getting ready to start this project, that there was an item that they would not approve bonds for, it was the parking lot renovation, they wouldn't let us sell bonds for that. Luckily, we did not do a capital fund transfer last year, so we had some money to transfer that over to meet the cash requirement that was required to finish this project, and we're just asking the board for that approval so we can make that transfer.
So made.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye, any opposed, motion carries. 5K, Mr. Hozie, Mr. Yance.
I think Mr. Yance is at the ballgame, I think we want the high schools being, if you want to say something.
Yeah, so the students of the high school are getting certified as lifeguards this year, and they, they're certifying through a gentleman press, but they need to practice their 300-meter final swim, they were, someone would use the pool to do that, I thought I would be present, make sure they're in there, and I'll get the insurance and that kind of thing, so make sure things are billable and legal, just want to make sure we have approval from the board.
Is that it? Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye, any opposed, motion carries. 5L, Mr. Sager.
I'd like to ask you all to approve the board funding for all postseason athletic and academic events and trips, not only at elementary, but middle school and high school, that puts such a cost to all our schools to do all those things, I feel that the board could jump in there and help us, they take care of regular season, we can take care of all of our regular season activities.
Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? There'll be no discussion, call for a vote, all in favor say aye, any opposed, motion carries. 5M, Mr. Sager.
And last Monday's commissioner's email had an opportunity for us to, any district want to look at, excuse that, man, if you know we previously done that to pass, especially at Ford Elementary, almost, probably for as much as $3 million that we had, I talked to KD once again about that today, I've had three discussions with him on that, we had him to July 15th to do that, and also spoke to Joe Nance about that, and there's possibility we can get some money there, basically about a percent interest rate or no interest rates to us going forward in the future, looking at some things we may want to do, it's an opportunity to get money that's, you know, we've got to reach up there, it's on the table right now, so, and we'll probably come back to you in July with final estimate things on that, and Joe Nance will be here talking about it then, we just want to let you know it's true, what we're currently working on.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chan. Second?
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye, motion carries. 5N, Mr. Burchett.
Last year, you created a part-time vehicle mechanic, one position for the district, and we are under the understanding that our most experienced and lead vehicle mechanic, leading mechanic is going to be imparting the district in the future, right at the end of the summer here, before it starts the next school year. So what we'd ask that you do is eliminate the half-time position and create two full-time vehicle mechanic one positions, it'll be a net zero for the district once this is, once this all plays out, and so this way, this summer, we can train our two mechanics with our lead, our most experienced senior person, and then as he leaves them, we'll ask you then to come back and eliminate a position, leaving us with a total net of three, but the cost to the district will be the same.
It's a wash.
It's a wash, yeah. Essentially, we're spending, we're spending some overtime to cover because you got two out there trying to cover hours of between 5:00 AM and 5:00 PM, and with three vehicles, no overtime for those vehicle mechanic ones, it'll be the same amount of money.
Motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye, any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. 5O, Mr. Burchett.
As you know, back in, we presented a presentation to you back early in the spring here, Mr. Cochran, Mr. Adams, and I've been going to KASA, working with them on strategic planning, we've worked with leadership team in the district, sent out surveys to students, staff, stakeholders, spent time in every school, we have now for you a strategic plan for you, it's attached, it's a linkable plan, so as you click on an objective there, it's like 2.1 or 4.2 or whatever, it'll take you down the page to the actual strategies and initiatives and metrics that will be used to measure those things, keep in mind, it's a district-level plan, and it's a way to get everybody focused on the same goals at every school and every teacher, and everybody have a printout of it, we can make a printout and give to the parents, be on our website and things, but basically, keep everybody moving in the same direction towards the same common goals, and it addresses the five areas of student excellence, workforce excellence, infrastructure excellence, financial excellence, community support, and internal processes, it identifies our mission, our vision, and our core values, and we feel it's a real good way to make sure everybody's focused on the same page. Now, it'll be a working document like everything else we have, so we might come back in the fall and have open updates and things like that, as we train and work with our staff to further disseminate, but, and then at the school level, they'll have their own strategies and initiatives to meet some of these goals, because, you know, every school doesn't have the same necessarily toolkit, and they all have their own attributes that they're strong in or maybe, maybe not as strong in, so they'll have their own initiatives and strategies to help meet those goals within the school.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye, any opposed, motion carries. 5P, Mr. Sager.
Yes, we ask you to approve the MOU with KDC on its career net program, that basically it pays for itself, to the grant, it pays for extra help with council, high school, teacher, and it'll pay.
$50,000 over the four years towards Project Lead the Way Engineering, Biomedical Science, Computer Science, really nice career.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Motion's made, motion second, all in favor say aye, any opposed, motion carries. 5Q, Ms. Goble.
We just asked the board to remove the property casualty interference with all of our agents here.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye, any opposed, motion carries. Item six, you've got the superintendent's personnel report. Item seven, like to recess into executive session for Senator KRS, 6128, 10, 1B to discuss acquisition or sale of properties, is there a motion?
So made.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're in executive session, thank you.